Alderman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Curialy.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Sismarzki.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here. Declare quorum. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty Planning and Zoning Building Committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections, changes? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, that passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November tenth, two thousand and twenty Planning, Zoning and Building Committee.
Second.
Questions, corrections, changes? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, that passes. Next, report and recommendation, review and approval of amendments to allow food preparation as a permitted use in the C two A district.
Second.
Ms. Springer, you want to take us through?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have just a couple of slides to review. The petitioner for this request is Diego Deostis, and he's requesting a text amendment to allow food preparation as a permitted use in the C two A zoning district. So the petitioner is purchasing right now three ninety East Irving Park Road, and I'll show you that. Actually, I can show you here. That property is right here at the corner of Ash and Irving Park Road, and it's currently zoned C two A. It previously, before the new U D O, it was zoned C three. And right now, food preparation is not currently allowed in the C two A, and that's what he would like to do in this building at three ninety Irving Park Road. So therefore, he's requesting a text amendment to the U D O to allow food preparation as a permitted use in that district. As you can see, the C two A is outlined in green here with the red hashes. It's surrounded by C one, C two, and C three zoning, and in addition to, of course, the T C B zoning, which is town center business. If we go on to the next, though, as food preparation is currently permitted in the C two, C three, and I one districts. The C two district is less restrictive than the C two A, and it's allowed there. It's also allowed in the C three. But for some reason, it was overlooked, I think, when the C two A district was created in May with the new U D O. Also, if you look here, the limited manufacturing, which is something that is much more of a heavier commercial use, that's already allowed in the C two A. So it would seem to make sense that food preparation would be an appropriate use for this district, would be appropriate use for this lot, and therefore, we took this to the C D C at a public hearing on November twenty-first, and they did vote unanimously six to zero to recommend approval. And that concludes my presentation.
I would like to, first of all, commend staff. This was lightning speed. I don't think I've ever seen anything in my history here move through the system as fast as this. It's almost impossible. So I hope this is the new standard, because this will be the measuring stick I use when somebody else comes here to get a text amendment done or some zoning variations. I mean, I won't go through the litany of things, but it's just unbelievable how fast we got this done. And so I guess part of that is applause, and the other part is, how do we do that and maintain that for everybody else?
And we are, I would like to extend appreciation to Senior Planner Pochea, because obviously, she's involved in working all of this magic. What we did in this case was accept the application. It was a simple text amendment. We went ahead and published for the public hearing, because it is required to be published in the newspaper. That is usually the thing that ties us up and causes some of the delay, because you have to give a certain amount of days' notice before the public hearing. So we went ahead and accepted it, and before we had all the documentation, and went ahead and posted. We've already done that as well for someone who's interested in being on the January agenda for the C D C, already preparing to put them on, even though we don't have all the documentation. The issue is, we do need to make sure in all cases that we have enough information to be able to post for the public notice for the hearing. And sometimes, we don't have that. We do have to wait for revised plans, so we know, and we make sure that we're posting for all the relief.
For a text amendment?
Text amendment, that's, so I'm talking about the one in January. So in those cases, it'll take a little bit longer, but in this case, it was very simple.
So a couple of questions, because I'm just trying to get this straight. And again, I'm applauding, because this, again, I can't say it enough. I mean, I think this thing, whole thing, got done in like forty days. Maybe even less. But, so you spoke to the fact that you would get the publication done ahead of time, even though we don't have all the paperwork. I'm okay with that, as long as that's applied evenly with everybody else.
Yes.
That's my, that's a theme you'll hear from me. I just like it to be fair for everybody.
Yes, as long as we have enough information to prepare the public notice, and in this case, we did.
Do we have to actually own the building before we apply?
No.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to hear it out loud. Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Curialy?
Yes, just clarification on the term food preparation. That's different than a restaurant and a food manufacturing. Is that correct? So what would food preparation cover? Just catering, or?
So it is, it is listed, the definition for food preparation is a catering establishment where food is prepared on the premises for consumption elsewhere. So it's basically a catering-type business. It's just defined as food preparation.
So if a restaurant prepared food for a caterer, that they would require two licenses, or two zoning?
No, as a restaurant, you're allowed to do this inherently within that business model, so you don't need a separate food preparation for that.
Okay, thank you.
Because they're held to a higher standard, because they're preparing food and serving it on site.
Alderman Jacob?
Just, you had just mentioned, like, standards and things. Does the Health Department with the catering get in, do they, do they need that license as well, or does that not need it?
They do have to, yes. And we won't issue a building permit until they have it.
Okay, thank you.
So, well, thank you for saying that. So you will not issue the building permit before they have the permit from the Health Department?
Correct.
Interesting.
This property, this petitioner is well aware of that and works with the DuPage County Health Department very well.
Any other questions? There being none, I believe we have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Curialy.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, report and recommendation, rezoning upon annexation from R one to R three and zoning variations for one fifty Pine Lane, one fifty-four Pine Lane, and four seventy Arbor Lane.
Ms. Springer, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a request for, as you mentioned, a rezoning and for zoning variations following an annexation. The petitioner itself is Elmhurst Builders and Nicole Judas. Here representing the petitioners this evening is Natalie Krieger, also a member of the family. The properties that are the subject of this petition are outlined in green. They are currently unincorporated and all vacant. This shows the three lots in the context of zoning in the city that are surrounding it. So the area that is shown as in, south of the two lots on Pine, that is shown kind of green, it doesn't have a zoning classification, that is remaining unincorporated. But the three lots that will be annexed and are seeking the rezoning and the variations are these three in green. The, upon annexation, the Unified Development Ordinance requires that all lots come in as the most restrictive classification automatically. So upon annexation, the properties automatically become zoned R one. That's obviously not an appropriate designation for these lots, given the surrounding zoning. So the petitioner is requesting rezoning of those lots to the R three residential classification, similar to the remainder of the neighborhood. The two lots on Pine Street, their new addresses will be one five oh and one five four Pine Lane. All three lots are six thousand five hundred and forty-five square feet, and all three are vacant. The one lot on Arbor, the new address will be four seventy Arbor Lane. Part of the memo may have said two seventy. That was a typo. The new address will be four seventy Arbor Lane, and again, same lot size and also currently vacant. Right now, the, all three lots don't meet the lot width or the lot size that are required by the U D O. The lot on Arbor, however, because it's a single standing substandard lot, there is a provision in the U D O that says that that lot can continue with no variation needed. So the continuation of the substandard lot is allowed.
When we say no variation needed, certainly the rules and the coverage would still apply to the smaller lot, right?
Yes.
The site yards are ten percent of fifty, not sixty-five.
Correct.
Right, so they're still following all the old rules. We're just allowing them not indeed to get a variance?
For the lot width and lot size.
Right.
Yes. However, the lots on Pine, they are both owned by the same owner, and the U D O is, like many others, consistently zoning ordinances require this. If you have two lots adjoining each other, and neither of them meet the code requirements, and they're both owned by the same entity, such that together, they would make a conforming lot, then they're required to be, just so joined. The petitioners have requested that they be allowed to be developed as two separate lots, as they were originally plotted, and therefore, that's why they're requesting a variation for the lot width and the lot size for both lots. So it's just the lots on Pine that need the variations, not the one on Arbor. All three need the rezoning. The C D C conducted a public hearing on November twenty-first and also voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are we, this is a general question, maybe, Jeff, are we recording the C D C meetings? I want to look to see, to get some comments.
Yeah, we typically, the only meetings we record are committee, the whole city council, and C D C. There might have been an error in that recording. As you know, we're going through a transition period now with new equipment, because it's starting to break down, so it could have been that there was some sort of malfunction.
It's just nice to get the feedback or get some input.
We will continue to record those, though.
Okay. And so just next, some comments and questions. So on that whole block, all those lots are fifty-foot, so I don't have any issue. It's not like they're all sixty-fives, and we're asking for fifty. Then I might have a few questions, but I just want to point out that the variance levels that we're getting, so, and I'm only pointing it out for future use when somebody comes here and the cases are similar, but not the same. If there's a lot of locations in town that have a hundred, hundred-and-twenty-foot lots that could be subdivided, but they're five feet or ten feet short, and that's why I'm going to point out these numbers. They go from sixty-five to fifty-foot lot, which is what it should be, is a twenty-three percent reduction. They go from eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five feet to six hun, six thousand five hundred and forty-five feet is a twenty-two percent reduction. I'm not sure, in your grid that you put together, that matrix here, why, under lot coverage, it says vacant as opposed to, that's still going to be forty percent, right?
Yes.
Maximum lot coverage under the zoning code, so that should read forty percent. And then the front build-to line, R three is twenty-five, but in your matrix here or grid, you've got twenty feet. Are we changing the twenty-five to twenty feet?
My apologies.
Because if we are, then I'm not agreeing to that, because that would be weird for the rest of the houses, if they're being held to twenty-five feet.
I'm sorry. Can you ask your question again?
So, in your, the zoning grid that you put together, showing what the requirements are for R one versus R three, and then showing what actually Lot seventeen, eighteen, and Lot eleven are. Under lot coverage for, or under frontline build-back, for R one, it's twenty-five foot frontline build-back. R three is frontline twenty-five foot. And under Lot seventeen, eighteen, you're saying twenty foot. So are we reducing the front build-to line to twenty foot from twenty-five foot?
No, that would, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. That's a typo.
Right. So although, I'm assuming all three of those are crossed.
Correct.
To make the, the street in the neighborhood be even, right? You don't want houses, I mean, so that's a big one. So that should all be, those should all be twenty-five, just so we're clear. The setbacks to ten percent, we kind of already covered that, so it's going to be five foot instead of six point five. The, when we go down to the rear yard setback minimum, again, on the R one, you say thirty. On the R three, you say thirty. And under R seventeen, or Lot seventeen, Lot eighteen, and Lot eleven, you just wrote in vacant. So are those all going to be thirty feet also?
They are all required to meet the code requirements.
Okay, so we're going to read those as saying, right, all thirty foot. The same with the building coverage and the height. So those numbers should all be extended, as opposed to saying vacant. I just want to make sure that we're meeting all the other zoning requirements.
Yes, they will be required to meet all the ones.
Right, they're going to be reduced percentage-wise, because it's a smaller lot and smaller setbacks. Okay.
Yes.
That was, that was my, my main issue. Mayor, please.
So they're coming in, or they're from R one to R three, why not R four? R four is a smaller lot, right?
So we did discuss this. There are a couple of R fours zoned lots to the north. The, the reason is generally from a rezoning standpoint, you want all the lots that are part of a neighborhood to have, that front on the same streets, to have the same zoning requirements, so the neighborhood looks consistent. So that's why we recommended the R three, and the petitioner was willing to proceed with that.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
So right now, we have a problem throughout the city where there's, you'll have all.
No problem.
You have all, everything zoned, and then you'll have an unincorporated home in the middle of a street. So next it is three lots that are unincorporated still, so how do we avoid that from happening now? Or, or when could we avoid what happened in the past, where we have, you know, every, every house on the block is incorporated, and then you have one house that's unincorporated?
They would need to either voluntarily want to annex, or the city would have to take action to forcibly annex them, which I don't believe is the policy here.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I just thought of one thing. So on the new lots, I don't know about Arbor, but I know Pine, and that was an issue with some of them, the recapture agreement over there. I think that recapture agreement and the ownership of the lots are the same entity, if I'm read everything correctly. But are, are they able to avail themselves to the discounted water hookup and those things? Is that?
Yes, so.
Am I going to hear that next week, that they're coming forward to get funds to, right, because presently, if you annex in, we'll help you financially hook up to sewer and water, correct?
Yes, I believe there is such a program.
Yeah. Yep, yes. That was the reason to take builders to come in and build. And this has a complexity, because the ownership of the property and the ownership of the utility, the recapture agreement, are the same person. So that would be a little difficult to put that program together, if they were going to ask to do that. I'm just bringing it up, just so that it can be addressed.
I mean, I sign those forms often, and usually, they're for existing homes, so you could be correct.
No, I know I'm correct.
I just don't recall. It's been a while, so.
Right. And I'll tell you the argument. Why would we want to give a builder the money to come and build a home in your neighborhood? And my answer was, why wouldn't you? Right? So if giving them five thousand towards a water service was what got them to build a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house, I'm in all the time. So if you go through all the information, you'll find out that, in this particular case, like a broken watch.
It's been a while.
Twice a day, I'm correct. So. Any other questions? There being none, uh?
I make a motion to approve.
As corrected with the, that they have to meet all the.
Yeah, as corrected with.
Second.
Rule call?
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Curialy.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, that passes. Thank you very much. Items to be considered at future meetings, Marino's relocation, winter of twenty-three, data center, Route eighty-three, January, building code amendments to be determined, array, more building code amendments. So after we pass it, two weeks later, we can change and write a text amendment. I love it. Is there anything else anybody would like to add or address? There being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Twenty-two minutes. Need approval of a minutes November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Public Health Safety and Judiciary Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Report recommendation for the approval of the agreement with F G M Architects, the architectural services for the Wooddale Police Station interior renovation. Chief?
Evening. Here to request the approval of the agreement with F G M Architects for the architectural services for the Wooddale Police Station renovation in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Previously, at the September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting, a resolution was passed approving agreement with F G M Architects for a conceptual study for updates to the Police Department facility. Several months later, a workshop was conducted with the results of the conceptual study with the council. We're here to request to proceed with this project, with the architectural plans with this F G M Architects.
Questions? Alderman Woods?
So, did we determine exactly the scope of work that we're going to, if I remember, we went through, there were multiple options, so we picked one of those options, and that's how we're moving forward?
Yeah, out of the workshop, I wasn't there, Chief Vestal was there, but my understanding is, out of that workshop, the preference of the council was to do the two phases over the single phase or the three phases.
Let's, let's hold up until we can get Vestal back here and confirm that that's what we agreed to. Mr. Murmice?
I was there. I remember. That was, that was the plan. That was the plan in your packet. You've got, in the F G M proposal, there's actually the desired building footprint. I think it's color-coded. At the time of the workshop, there was a couple of different color-coded ones, but this was the winning option, as well as sequencing it similar to Public Works, where it would kind of be bid out perhaps at once, but sequenced over a couple fiscal years, but it would be an ongoing project.
I turned the meeting back over.
It was the purple was first, right, if I remember right?
Yeah, purple's phase one and green's phase two.
Any other questions?
Did you put down that total yet? Is that on our paperwork? I don't know if you want to add, you would amend the motion to that amount? Can you repeat that number?
Yeah, it's under the recommendation, not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
I make the motion to approve the agreement with F G M Architects in a not-exceed amount of one ninety-eight seven sixteen.
Second.
All in favor? Probably. Well, for that, roll call?
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Curialy.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes. Items to be considered at future meetings, other than none, anybody have any?
There's not a same motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Call to order the Public Works Committee. I'll let the minute taker show that the same council members are present. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Public Works Committee Minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, corrections? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, nay? Motion passes, thank you. Report and recommendation, there's one item. Approval of a proposal for professional engineering services from R G N Group for the Addison Road Water Main Phase Three preliminary study in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. Dr. Lane, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The first two phases of this project were completed back in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, and covered replacement of the Addison Road Main from Elizabeth Drive to Potter Street. At that time, a third phase was planned, which would cover the rest of the way from Potter Street to Irving Park Road. However, due to some hurdles that were encountered at the time, never came to fruition. We now desire to complete this project to eliminate a dead end that's located at Potter and Addison, and to replace the aging main along Addison Road. And now we'd like to proceed with engineering services to identify a feasible project and move into the design.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so the preliminary study, what are they, what are they going to study?
So they're going to coordinate with the various agencies involved, DUDOT and IDOT, as we'll have to tie in at Irving Park Road, as well as the number of utilities that are along that stretch. Combat has some high-power transmission lines along the east side of the road, which would have to be de-energized if the main was going to be placed on that side, as it was to the south. There's also a number of utilities along the west side, Nycor, as well as various fiber and cable companies. And as far as DUDOT is concerned, the last time that we encountered them, they had indicated that they would not allow any new linear assets in the roadway. But however, now that ten years has passed, we're hoping that they've softened on that stance, as they've allowed Addison Road to the south to replace the main in the roadway. We're hoping that maybe they would allow us to do the same. Also, they're going to be looking a lot closer at whether lining is a more feasible project this time, as technology in that regard has increased greatly in the last ten years.
So are we, if I could follow up, so are we going to take the information from the study and then approach DUDOT to see, you know, if this is option one, for us, option two, these are the things we're encountering, will you allow us to do A, B, C?
Yes, exactly, yes.
I'm just trying to figure out why we're spending twenty thousand. If we're going to do the thing, why don't we just engineer it?
Right, because we don't have an optimal route right now that we're confident that we could just move into the design with. So we have to, you know, identify first which would be the most feasible project. This would be the first information gathering portion of any engineering agreement. So it would technically be part of phase one engineering. They've just separated it out, because we don't want to move into a design without knowing that we have a project that we're confident in and that the other agencies would, would allow.
Okay, so I'm, I'm glad you said the phase one, because that's what I was just going to ask. Typically, that's what we would do. It would be a phased approach, and this is the, the study phase of that.
Right.
Why don't we have that put in place? My personal liker belief is that. I, my personal, uh, liker belief is that this costs us more money, because then when we go into the other one, they're going to do the preliminary thing anyway.
Right.
So, this almost seems to be an interim step that doesn't need to be taken, the work needs to be done. How we structure it is, is my question.
Right, so typically for larger projects, they would phase it out, phase one, phase two, phase three, as they're doing on the Elizabeth Drive Bridge, which we're currently in phase one for, it's kind of the, the information gathering portion of it, before you move into actually constructing design documents. Uh, and a lot of our, you know, typical roadway programs and things like that that are much simpler, we'll just group it into one agreement as a design. We'll basically go straight to the design portion, as there's not that much information gathered, so. We've separated it out in this instance, because we don't feel confident that we have a project that we can move forward with the design on at this point.
And the, well, we'd be able to move forward with some scope of work, as you pointed out, to line it or not line it. Right, what are, so the issues are that you have to put the, the new water main in a location other than where the existing one is, right? So where does that go, in the street and the parkway, right? Is that the issue that we're dealing with?
It's possible, it could be, um, constructed in the same location, virtually just slightly above it, or, yeah, as you said, moved to the other side of the road, or lined, or pipe burst, and then a new main bored through. There's, there's a number of options that we have, we just don't know which one's going to be the most cost-effective, and which one's going to be, uh, allowed by the other agencies, essentially.
And then, just one last thing, where we're, uh, wh- when we're doing that, I know that there's some properties, uh, that aren't connected to the water, and so will we, when we do that stub onto the, into the parkway? So that in the future, when they want to connect, they could connect up?
Yes, any parcel that does not currently have a service will be provided a service to a B-box in the parkway.
Thank you.
Mayor, please?
You said we had a study to see if they're going to allow us to run the line. We have a line there already, and if I recall, the reason we didn't go all the way is because of, it was finances back then.
I have no doubt that that was part of it, as the city had some other very large projects on the horizon at that point as well. They would not allow any new services under the roadway, our main is currently in the parkway, and they would prefer that we stay in the parkway. Uh, however, as I mentioned, there's a number of utilities there on the west side, and the overhead, uh, combat lines on the east side that would need to be de-energized, which is a whole nother process of approvals and, and actual construction.
So, Mayor, please?
Well, when we did this project, I remember we had been, they were working evenings to get it done, so the street wasn't closed all day long and whatnot. I'm not understanding, we got to spend twenty thousand dollars to figure out if we're going to do the project? I think this was unfunded still, this project, correct?
No, it was in the CIP, uh, we had fifty-six thousand dollars for design in this year's, uh, capital plan.
For the, but not?
For design of water main replacement.
And what year was the water main replacement in the CIP? I don't know why I don't remember.
I think Addison Road replacement was slated for fiscal year twenty-four, but we included the design the previous year, kind of as we did, we've done with the, uh, the lift stations. One year we do the design, the next year we do the construction.
So, again, I don't understand why we can't just go to the design.
Because we don't know the most optimal place where we're going to put the main. It's very possible that lining might be our best option at this point, but we have to, there's, you know, a number of hurdles that go along with that, too. You have to have bore pits, and those would have to be in the roadway at some portion. We just don't know which project is going to be the best for us at this point.
This water mains now, it was lousy back in two thousand and eleven and twelve, so I'm sure it's got, hasn't gotten any better over the next ten years.
Right, I, I think we don't want to move forward with phase two engineering and come up with an actual design that we're going to get to permitting for DUDOT and have them not permit us for that project, and then we're back to the drawing board. So the first step in any project is the information gathering phase and, uh, you know, proposed layout, and then you, you work from there. This would be included in the engineering agreement if we were moving forward with a, a design agreement at this point as well. I remember this too, as I was there at the time, and the mayor's correct, it was, uh, anticipated to be way more expensive, but the reason it, we ran out of funds is because there really was no way that we could figure out how to do it at the time, because it's like a spaghetti dish of pipes and utilities and whatnot, and it's the most difficult water main we've ever done in that area, which is why it was going to cost so much money, because we really didn't know how we were going to figure out how to do it.
Right, and I know I spoke to Mr. Lang before the, there are residents that, even though he put in a fancy new water main, still couldn't hook up, and they were basically complaining and yelling at me. Okay.
Never happens.
Alderman Jacob?
So, uh, would, DUDOT or IDOT, they have to approve something, correct?
Correct, we have to get a, a permit through that, because the roadway is under their jurisdiction.
Well, I mean, but if we get, if we ask them first if they're inter, if they're more inclined to do it, would, do they have to spend this much to do the study? Because if they say no, then don't they have to do basically a different, I mean, the study might cha, they may not have to do as much work on the study?
Yeah, they're going to want to see some type of actual plan or at least proposal before we send anything to them for review. They will do sometimes preliminary meetings, but it's usually for, like, federally funded projects, not typically just local agency.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Ames?
Um, so I, I'm looking at this, and I'm just trying to make sense of this. So in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, there was a study done, but that study is not, like, relevant right now, because technologies have changed, i.e. the lining.
Correct, technologies have changed, there's actually more utilities, uh, that have been added in that area since that time, and, uh, the thought is that perhaps some of the people at those agencies have changed, and maybe we would get different answers if we asked the same questions that we asked back in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen.
So in order to get the permission from the agencies that we need, we have to have a more current study done? We can't use the same information that we used, you know, ten plus years ago?
Some of the information may still be applicable and may be reused in this instance. We may, you saw, if you saw the, uh, the preliminary letter from back in two thousand and thirteen, you saw a number of proposed routes. Some of those may still be viable, they may not be based on the changes, so we have to kind of get a fresh set of eyes on it and, uh, see if those are still our best options, as well as taking into consideration the, uh, the new technology that's available.
Right, and with the lining, I know you mentioned too that there's a dead-end spot, so a lining wouldn't resolve that, that end.
With the lining, you have to have bore pits anyway, to be able to access the main. Uh, so the bore pit would be located relatively in the location of the, uh, the dead end there, and you would make that closure at that time as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
So, help me with this then, maybe, because we won't get hung, hung up on the words preliminary study and phase one engineering. What is the preliminary study going to consist of? What am I going to expect back from them? Are they doing some preliminary rough drawings, some schematics?
Yes.
Is it just a research thing?
Yeah, agency coordination, uh, and cost analysis, and then, uh, at the end of it, we hope to have a project settled on that we're ready to move in, uh, onto design with and permitting.
So they'll essentially research multiple options, one, two, three, have preliminary discussion to slightly vet out the possibility or probability of either one of those options?
Correct, and I make a recommendation to move forward to design with more of the options.
And then, uh, they're going to attach a cost to each one of those, so that there's?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, so, Director, so if we use a, a lining system, we'll probably end up saving a lot more, more money than actually replacing the whole water main. Who's going to determine that? I mean, do, do we get to determine we want to use that system, or is, if, if they?
That's, that's what the engineer is going to be looking at, uh, lining comes with its own challenges, you know, based on, um, number of services and length of run and number of bends, and this is a pretty straight shot, so it may be a, a more feasible option, we believe. But they will be, that will be one of the alternates that they're going to be looking at, and, uh, attach a cost estimate to it.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor, please?
This is one of the larger mains that feeds the city, right? So it's not a? Oh, I thought it was bigger than that.
No, it's twelve.
Okay.
Anyone else have a motion to approve the study?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please?
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Uh, items to be considered at future meetings, IGA with Forest Preserve District of DuPage County for Elizabeth Drive in January, RJN I and I agreement, spring twenty-twenty-three, any other additions? Uh, Alderman Sizmarsky?
Do you, do you some of the boards line, look at the course line there, for the water runoff?
Yeah, we were talking about that. Yeah, we, uh, we'd look to, uh, address that storm issue under a future role program, as we've done with some other areas.
Anything else? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?
I'd like to call the order to Finance Administration Committee, um, minute taker, please take note, the same council members are present. And I need approval of the minutes of November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, of Finance Administration Committee meetings.
Make the motion?
Second.
Any corrections, uh, to the minutes? No corrections, all in favor, say?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is, uh, report and recommendation for property casualty cyber workman's compensation insurance renewal for the two thousand and twen- uh, two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four calendar year in the amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, and no sense, that is my motion. Any questions, if you have any questions, Director Wilson can answer any questions that you have? No questions? Okay, roll call then.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is items to consider at future meetings, uh, CIP, Capital Improvement Project, uh, coming up January twelfth, and, uh, the audit report coming up January twenty-sixth. Is there other, um? Oh, there we go, there's another one, I got to keep turning the page here. And, uh, and, uh, fiscal year ended in two thousand and twenty-four budget, February twenty-third. Any, any other, uh, items to consider? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.